Good evening. We welcome you here to our city council meeting. We declare that we have a full quorum present. All members are in attendance tonight. We will begin our meeting by having an opening ceremony under the direction of Councilperson Karen Way.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As well, we have some visitors tonight. It looks like there's a scout troop here, or maybe two. We would invite one of your scouts to come forward and introduce yourselves, your troop, which schools you attend, and also what merit badge or activity you're working on. So just come right up here and speak into the microphone.
I'm troop 644, and we're here for the citizenship and the community merit badge, and we go to Valley Junior High.
Valley Junior High. Very well, thank you. Did that cover all of the young men there? Okay. I don't see any other groups. So we'll go on now to our minutes. We have two sets of minutes that are ready for our review and approval to the council. Well, maybe we all approve the minutes, Mayor, Councilman Ork. I move for approval of the minutes of our April 15th and April 22nd, 2014 meetings. You have the motion before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Motion is properly before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll place the motion to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have a special award that is being presented this evening. Mr. Pyle, who is...
Let me actually refer that to Mr. Astle. I'm not sure if it's Jason or Darren who are with us this evening, or...
I see someone standing over behind the chair.
Right, right. I knew that Mr. Seedler was going to be doing it. I just didn't know if we were going to be introducing him.
Are you Mr. Seedler?
Yes, sir. My name is Scott Seedler, Mayor. And most Valley City Councils, a pleasure to be out here tonight with you and to join with you and to acknowledge the great work that's been done on behalf of the citizens of West Valley City over the course of many decades, and that's managing and stewarding trees across the city, in particular, trees that reside in public parks and along the streets. I've been in my position as the community forester along the West Hesh Front for 10 years, and I can tell you that I can truly recognize the size of the London Plaids tree out in the parking lot. They seem a bit more sizable, as well as everything else in West Valley City, including the tracks and the commercial districts, and everything that you do out here is certainly wonderful. And one of the things that I regularly look at are the condition of these long-lived trees. The state partners with USDA Forest Service and the Arbor Day Foundation to recognize communities that steward and lead in the management of those trees. And this last year was West Valley City's 19th year of being recognized as a Tree City USA. There are four requirements that must be met annually to gain that recognition. You have to have a tree care department or citizen volunteer tree board. You must have a tree ordinance that guides and recognizes the importance of trees, in particular, public trees, to celebrate each year Arbor Day and to plant or do a project related to tree management. And lastly, would be the $2 per capita expenditures towards tree care. And 2013 was the 19th year that West Valley City was recognized as a Tree City community. There are now 84 of these communities across the state of Utah. The most recent was Apple Valley and Washington City down in Washington County. And the oldest Tree City USA community in Utah is Murray, who's been involved in the program for 37 years. And in addition to the longevity of involvement in this program, there's a special designation that this year was bestowed upon West Valley City, and that's called a Sterling Tree City USA Award. And that award was named after J. Sterling Morton, the founder of Arbor Day and the keynote person, individual, who led to the creation of the Arbor Day Foundation. And this award is bestowed upon communities that have received at least 10 growth awards over the course of time. And it's been a pleasure to work with Jason and Darren here tonight because they've been leaders and innovators in the use of trees and how they have embraced scouts or civic groups and church groups to help them in the management of trees and also to give these folks a chance to be stewards themselves. And there are only four communities across Utah that have received the Sterling Tree City USA Award: Salt Lake City, Provo, and Moa. So I think it's a wonderful expression of your leadership and innovation in tree care and management. It certainly is a pleasure for the State Foresters Office to work with your city. And we look to many successful years in the future and to shaping the aesthetics and how West Valley City looks from the tree perspective. And thank you very much for your efforts to support those measures. Thank you.
Thank you very much. To the council then, any comments, or Councilman Rushton?
I'll make one here. I was going to start clapping because it's an important award and it's because our city continues to meet requirements to be Tree City USA. It's worth noting, I think, to the scouts and everyone present here, when Darren and his group gets together, anytime they do a tree planting, they always ask the people in attendance. They say, "Do you know where the closest forest is?" And of course, it's always, "Well, it's up the mountains that way," or "Down south this way," and they're very quick to point out that, "No, we live in our own urban forest, and the trees that are around us provide many benefits to the community." And so Darren, congratulations, and we know that you're an important part of this, as well as the rest of our Parks Department, as well as citizens and others that look after our trees and continue to merit us, worthy of this prestigious recognition. So I just want to express my thanks and look forward to adding another year to under our belt next year.
Thank you. With that then, we'll move forward to our public comment section of our meeting. And we do have a couple of people who have signed up. Now, we say to you, if you are here to speak in relationship to the Community Development Block Grant, which has a public hearing, that is not the part that we're at. You'll have that opportunity to speak because we'll actually have a separate public comment on that item. But any other item is open at this point, and we did have two people sign up. Are you ready to speak? Elliot Mott? You can come forward and if you'll state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. I might even know Elliot Mott. 3200 West, 3912 South. Congratulations on your Tree City Award. We need more trees in West Valley City. Commissioners, it's a pleasure for me to be with you tonight. I'm here tonight to talk about the suspension bridge over the Jordan River east of the Cultural Celebration Center. It's a hazard. I ask that you condemn it. The problem the bridge has, Commissioners, is the boards on the top surface run parallel with the direction of travel. That place is bicyclists in harm's way. I have some pictures. This is the bridge as you would go across it, going west to east, and then this is a close-up to show scale. A permission to folks?
Certainly you can hand those.
It's such a new facility, such a beautiful bridge, and fun to walk across, but it's a hazard to ride across. And because it exists as a connecting link between one side of the river and the other side of the river, it's natural that cyclists are going to use it. My fear is it's going to generate a tremendous amount of negative publicity for the city and worse, citizen injuries. The Jordan River corridor is such a wonderful community asset. We don't need to construct hazards placing citizens in harm's way. And I think that's what our design is on here. So I'm appearing before you tonight to bring this concern I have to your attention. In sum, I'd like you to condemn it, or correct the design, because it's not safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have... John? Something or other, I think.
Is that light?
Yes.
Okay.
It is. Now that you've done it, yes, it is.
Thank you very much. What I'm here tonight is to present you with a petition from the way to buy it. Excuse me. To get this problem we have over here on Lancer Way and 3325 West, that gully. Cars are dragging across there, bribing their rear bumpers. I drove across there and broke a thing off the bog. It's a connector, an electric connector off of my car, and we've been putting out for years. And I think it's about time they did something about that. But it was not, it should be done that way in the first place. But it is a hazard. The snow collects in it. They're bad. It's fixed it. And it's caused a hazard. So that's why I'm here tonight, to protect this petition for you. I'm sorry that nobody, only about four or five people showed up tonight. I was there Friday, put out about 45 notices for people to be here. And I have a petition here for 37 people on the block. They live with, for this to get done. And we feel that it's something that should be taken care of. It shouldn't have been put that way in the first place. But it's supposed to run the water down, but the water stays in the thing and freezes. And when there's plow of snow, it fills it full of snow, and it's a downright hazard. And I don't think it would cost that much to really do the job and do it right. But I feel that they should go down and, instead of trying to run the water down in that gully, to put a pipe through there from the one side of the 3200, pipe it over to where the outlet goes down. I think that's what should be done. And then bring the thing up so it's fairly level with the two streets, because if things are about two or three feet deep, I don't know how many of you people drive through there, but people are driving through there every day. And you can see the scar marks all caught where the bumpers are dragging through. And this is what this petition pertains to. And we just feel that it's about time they did something about that. Even the water don't even run through there. It leaves a puddle out in there. Whoever done that job, I think it's ridiculous. Now, I know, any of you people aren't familiar with that or not?
The time is yours to you, and we don't want to interrupt your presentation.
Well, that's what I, I've tried to explain the problem to you and what we want. And I am not much of an engineer, but I kind of figured out a way how to do that. If it had been done, and of course, the cost is concerned, I don't think it would be that much. I've lived on that street for 60 years. I moved here in '53. And some of the things they've done to it, I really haven't been very happy about. They've put it so high. So, and if we're getting a snowplow in there. I had a bad experience here a few years ago. I'd go to the hospital. I got an ambulance in there and it got stuck in the snow because the plow hadn't been plowed. I had to call another ambulance to get me in and to get me to the hospital. And then that's one problem. And with this thing is, I don't feel why they can't fix it. Can't, I can't get any reason at all, absolutely no reason I can possibly think of. I don't think the cost would be that much.
Did you want to give that petition to the council?
Well, I don't know where, this is where I'd give it to, I guess.
Yes, if you'll make sure the city recorder is the one who keeps track of all the information.
Shall I just give her this copy?
If you would like, that would be the best way.
Well, I don't have a copy of it, but I should have copied it, but that's all right. It's all right. I'll pass it on.
If you'll indicate to her which one you are on there, I bet we could mail him a copy of the back. Is that okay?
Actually, it's signed on both sides.
And then, just one more item. Several of you are here in support of this just by a raise of hands. Who's here on this issue?
I can't figure out. I got four people yesterday. The other day, I thought out 35 notices on Saturday, and for people to come in there and have it in English and Spanish.
Well, you found one of those things where we find that not a lot of people come.
Oh, well, yeah, there's a lot of Spanish in our...
Doesn't mean they're not interested, if you thought that.
Well, now, I guess what, I don't know what's going to happen from here on, but we'd sure like to see your back, get some feedback, what the city feeds about it.
We'll have some comments in a minute, because we do our public comment portion first, to allow everyone to speak uninterrupted.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm the one who's dearly frustrated.
Thank you for coming. I don't believe there was anyone else signed up to speak, so now we'll turn to our city manager for any comments.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll make a quick reply, just for hopefully the benefit of the two folks who came and spoke under the public comments. Under the pedestrian bridge question. The pedestrian bridge was designed, I'm sorry, we don't even call it that, but that was the original intent of that bridge was to make a pedestrian access across the river that had the feel and the function of a suspension bridge, which included movement of the bridge as opposed to a fixed rigid structure. And hence, that drove the design and why the design was such as it was. Now, having said that, of course, the gentleman was correct. There could be, and it might possibly be, times when folks want to drive, ride their bicycle across that. So we will go and we'll take a look at that and see if there's some sort of improvement that we can make in terms of either signage or warning of access across the recommendation, that sort of thing. We wouldn't recommend condemning it or even necessarily going to the extent, at least right now, of replanking the bridge. That might interfere with the design and the original intent, purpose of it. So just wanted to make the comment that we'll go and take a look at that and see if there are other things we could do there. To the gentleman who just spoke on the Lancer Way hazard, we'll take that petition as well, and I'll get us zeroed in on what exactly and where the issue is there, and we'll go take a look at that and see if there's something we can do about that as well. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. To the council, any comments? I would just make one in connection with the bridge as well. I went, because I had received some information on it, and I went and walked across it. And it is correct that it is not designed for bicycles. And I'm not sure that, as you said, that was certainly not the intent. And I'm not sure that that can reasonably be done, but I don't believe the intent was ever to have bicycles riding across it.
Yes, that's correct.
It was just a pedestrian access.
But recognizing the possibility that could happen, absolutely, we'll go out and take a look at ways to make sure that it's not a problem.
Nothing else then, we'll move on to, just so that those who may be brought to the petition, you understand that in city council meeting, we cannot take any action that isn't on the agenda and posted ahead of time. So regardless of how we feel about an issue that's brought to our attention by the citizens, we can maybe talk a little bit about it, but officially, we have to go back and work on that and see what can be done. We're not ignoring it. By state law, we're prohibited from ever taking action on an item that we've not posted and let everyone know, so that not just the 35 would know, but everyone else. Okay? The same with the bridge. You know, we won't take any action until we come back, and then that will be properly posted and noticed up for everyone. So thank you very much for coming this evening. We'll continue now with our regularly scheduled agenda. We are now to item eight on our agenda. We are, this is for Resolution 14-69, accepting a, this is for approving a Community Development Block Grant budget proposal for the coming fiscal year. Mr. Pyle, did you want to add any information on that? This is a list of those projects that we will use those funds for.
No, sir.
And what we will do is we will now open that to public comment. I'll declare, I guess, the public input portion of this open. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this issue on? Yes, we have several people. Quite a few. Well, if you will come forward and just, you know, amongst yourselves, determine which, and of course, introduce yourself, your name and address for the record.
Okay. I'm Sal Jansen with Salt Lake Community Action Program, and your continued support of the West Valley City Neighborhood Food Center is appreciated. We have four pantries serving Salt Lake County, one full-time paid staff person for each center who oversees an average of six volunteers. They are responsible for receiving the donated food and disseminating it daily. We would not be able to do that without the committed volunteers donating 500 to 600 hours monthly. The West Valley City pantry serves about 100 families daily, 50% of being served are children. We disseminate around 8,000 pounds of food valued at $10,000 daily. We served 58, 97 families in West Valley City in 2013. Our four centers served 80,000 families last year. This program is greatly needed because it helps any family who is in need. When families come to the food center, we are able to refer them to other services that they may need. Again, thank you for supporting the Salt Lake County Neighborhood Food Centers.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Mary Cranny. I work with Legal Aid Society, and I just want to introduce Legal Aid to any of you who may not be familiar with us. A lot of people are more familiar than I am. We've been around for 92 years, providing legal support and legal representation for free at low or no cost for low-income people throughout Salt Lake County. Since 1986, we have had a program that is unarguably our largest program right now, which is a domestic violence victim assistance program. That is the program for which we seek funds from the Community Development Block Grant from West Valley City and other areas every year. And we, I am here to say how much we appreciate West Valley's support of its own citizens, its own residents, in their effort to achieve safety in their homes and to build stability into their lives for themselves and their children. Domestic violence, as most of you can appreciate, is something that simply isn't going to go away. And we see, sadly, we see pretty much the same numbers every year. We are expecting at least 340 primary victims to come to us for assistance who are West Valley residents. At that rate, even though we can really do this on a shoestring, we've got a very tightly wound program here, we can cover a case for approximately $210. We're getting protection orders from the court and other things resolved that will see to the safety needs of the individuals. So we're looking at about $70,000. This last year, West Valley City has provided $10,000 of that, and we are deeply, deeply grateful. I believe we've been recommended for $8,000 for the coming year, and this is going to make a huge difference in our ability to serve the people of West Valley City. Thank you so much for your help in this, and we do appreciate how much you care about your own residents here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll get to all of you.
Thank you. My name is Ellen Parrish. I work with Community Health Centers, Inc. We have seven clinics here in the valley, and our Taylorsville clinic is the one that serves mostly most of your residents, but we really appreciate your support. I think that you probably have seen the report that last year, we provided 24,000 medical and 4,000 dental visits to West Valley residents that are low-income. All of these folks are low-income, and we treat them on a sliding scale. We've delivered 153 babies with a West Valley City zip code, and we do all this on a shoestring as well, and we appreciate your continued support so that we can continue to care for the most vulnerable members of our society. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name's Jessica Burnham, and I'm here today on behalf of The Road Home, Utah's largest provider of homeless shelter and services. And I would first like to express our gratitude for your partnership with our agency and for the current funding recommendation. The 2013 Utah Point in Time Count estimated that 15,093 individuals experienced homelessness in Utah during 2013. The mission of The Road Home is to help people step out of homelessness and back into our community. And we do this by providing emergency services, shelter, case management, and permanent housing solutions. We have a request before West Valley City to support emergency shelter for those experiencing homelessness in our community. During fiscal year 13, The Road Home provided 353,846 nights of shelter to 7,065 men, women, and children. Once in shelter, individuals and families can access the tools and resources they need to transition out of shelter and into housing in the community. During fiscal year 13, we worked alongside 2,074 individuals as they secured and maintained housing in the community. Your support has been critical in these efforts, so I would like to thank you again and open it up for any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you very much. And next, there are still one or two more.
My name is Mariah Griffith, and I'm here with Family Support Center. We've been recommended for two different funding projects. One is $7,000 for the crisis nursery, and the other is, I don't know, I think it's like $2,500, for security cameras for that crisis nursery in West Valley. And hopefully, this isn't the first time that you've heard of the crisis nurseries, but if it is, they are 24/7 facilities for children at risk of abuse or neglect. So parents come to the crisis nursery and leave their children to be cared for free of charge, anytime, day or night, at points of high stress. of charge, anytime, day or night, at points of high stress. So if they feel like they're at a breaking point, they may hurt their child if they don't get a break. And as a mother of two kids under the age of five, I know how you can get there. It's really, it's tough, and if you don't have family to help you, then we're just happy to be there to help them. But also, it accommodates medical appointments, doctor's appointments, job interviews. The over 2,500 visits to the crisis nursery last year were work-related, so a babysitter is getting sick last minute and you can't get to work, you know, they can bring them for that, or for job interviews, or for different things like that. So last year, we had 985 visits from West Valley children, and they were there for over 4,000 hours of care. And the really amazing thing about the West Valley Crisis Nursery is that it's also helping your neighbors, and it's very valued, not only for those 4,000 hours to West Valley children, but the 1,700 children cared for in the three crisis nurseries, almost 1,000 of them used the West Valley City location. So it's helping your own city, it's helping your neighbors, and it's really decreasing the risk of child abuse, as well as increasing supports to parents so that they can get the care they need. Childcare is a huge barrier to other services. If they're trying to sign up for any type of service, it's not a kid-friendly environment. I don't know if you've ever been into a DWS office. They don't, they don't let kids there. And so it's really helpful to have that, that option to remove that barrier so they can access other services. So we are excited about the support. We appreciate it, and we look forward to continuing to serve in your city next year.
Thank you. Next? I'm sure they're way, oh.
Can I share some information with you?
Certainly, if you'll share it there with our city recorder, she'll see that those who passed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. My name is Francesca Blanc. I'm with House of Hope. We are the oldest nonprofit substance use disorder treatment provider in the state. We've been providing substance use disorder treatment prevention education services since the early 1950s. The House of Hope Salt Lake City Program provides substance use disorder treatment services for mid- and low-income women, pregnant women, and women with children, and we are one of only three programs of this county in Salt Lake County. The women come from drug-addicted, often abusive, and frequently homeless environments. For many of them, House of Hope is the first safe, clean, and stable living situation they have experienced in a long time. In many cases, women or families who do not get substance use disorder treatment continue to experience domestic violence, criminal activity, child abuse, neglect, and in some cases, death due to overdose or involvement with violent people. Substance use disorder also creates a ripple effect in our community with overutilization of the welfare system, social services, public fundamental medical services, and the legal system. Last fiscal year, through our Salt Lake City programs, we served 232 women and 128 children in our residential treatment, day treatment, and outpatient. Of these, 92 women and 53 children received residential treatment. And the numbers that I mentioned first, we served 20 women and 18 children from West Valley City. Your grant will help partially fund a community transition work salary. The community transition worker helps low-income residential women and their families become self-sufficient and successfully transition back to our communities. Your grant would also help leverage us other donations that we might receive for this particular position, and we would like to thank you for the past support of our organization and for this round of funding. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Tim Savage, and I'm here on behalf of Salt Lake Community Action Program. This year culminates the 50th anniversary of the establishment of community action agencies all throughout this great country of ours and the war on poverty that was declared by LBJ. Salt Lake CAP continues its effort on fighting the war on poverty, and the mission of the housing program is to facilitate stability and empower those in poverty to find their path to self-sufficiency. Salt Lake CAP also provides a wide variety of services, including Head Start, weatherization, our food pantry services, heat, and employment services as well. One of the important pieces to, to really stabilize in families that are in poverty is helping them to, to have a safe and affordable place to stay while they're going through and resolving some of the issues that they're facing. During 2012 and 2013, 54 households were served with rental deposit assistance from West Valley City. We also provided those families with employment and financial literacy services as well. I just wanted to share a, a story or a letter that I received from one of my clients, and just to sort of give you an idea of the type of impact that this, this funding provides. It says, "Hello, Tim. This letter is long overdue. I know that there are policies and procedures, procedures that guide Salt Lake Community Action Program, and what services you can provide to whom and when, so it's not always possible for Salt Lake CAP to help people even if you wanted to. I still wanted to tell you how much I'm grateful for the time it took to meet with me, to come to my apartment premises, and the financial assistance that Salt Lake CAP provided me over the several months, which in turn got me into a safe living situation, which is so vital for me. I was also able to use a voucher, which was a DI voucher that we receive and provide to our clients, for a client that was helpful for me during my surgical procedure that I had to undergo. I will forever be grateful to you and to your organization, and I want to tell you how often I think of what you do and what it means to me." On behalf of this client, as well as many other clients, I'd like to echo those sentiments and say that we're deeply, deeply grateful for the recommendation and allocation by this, this council and the recommendation committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, was that everyone, I believe? Yes, okay. Then we will close the public hearing portion of the meeting, and now go to the council for comment and action. Councilman Vincent.
Mayor, just like to comment, you know, every year, we send several council members back to Washington, DC, and, and always, one of the things on their agenda is to, to lobby our, our, our federal delegation back there for funding for these types of programs. And over the years, it's up and down, up and down, and, but we always go back with the idea of, of being able to provide for these essential services for people in our community, and we're, we're indeed grateful for the efforts that each of your organizations put forth to, to take care of the needs of those who are underserved, and we're grateful for the work that you do.
Thank you. Councilman Rashford.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just, to, to tag along here with Councilman Vincent's comments, it was this year that Councilman Buehler and I were back in Washington, DC, and trying to persuade our federal delegation to send us as much as West Valley tax dollars back to West Valley City and back to community organizations to do some good with it. And I just want to thank those for coming and, and thank those for their good service they do in the community, because it does make our job very easy. You know, Councilman Buehler and I told some of the stories, like the Crisis Nursery Center, some of the things that we do with home rehabilitation, some of the things that, you know, we're doing on the scope of combating domestic violence in the city, as, as well as all of the other worthy causes that were here tonight. And I can report back that the return on our investment is staggering, that for every dollar we put back into it, that the amount of money saved or the amount of prevention that comes into and the amount of good that comes out of it is, there's few things we do on the city council that we get as much of a payback on than allocating these community development block grant dollars. And so thank you for making our, our community better, and thank you for making, you know, our story to tell easy with the, with the good work that you do. And since it is such, I think we're all thrilled with the process and how it went through the committee and the recommendations that came back and seeing this get to work, I would move for approval of Resolution 14-69.
Do you have a motion before us? Do we have a second?
Mayor, I'd like to second that motion with the note that we do appreciate those that have come and expressed their gratitude. We would like to fund everybody. We have funded in this resolution approximately 20 different organizations, most of them just a little bit less than what they asked for, and that's just kind of how it goes. But with that, Mr. Mayor, I would second the motion.
Thank you, Councilman Buehler. We have the motion properly before us. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none. And before we place the motion, I didn't mention before, but we have discussed and reviewed these items in our study meeting last week, and so these are not new items to the council. So if there's not a lot of discussion, understand that we've already had our opportunity in another public meeting to discuss these as we felt needed, as with all of the items on our agenda. So with that, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we go to item number nine on our agenda, Resolution 14-70, to adopt a tentative budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015, and set August 12th of this year as the date for a public hearing. And because I'm not as familiar with this process, any additional comments, Mr. Pyle, on the introduction of this budget?
No, sir. Other than we are going to have the opportunity to have a short presentation, or basically it's a description of what the tentative budget entails this year from Mr. Welch. Now is the right time, or?
Now would be appropriate time to do that.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, City Council, appreciate the invitation to present the proposed, the proposed budget to you for fiscal year 2015. As you know, we've spent a number of months working on this, and the presentation is a summary of the information that we have put together to propose to you for the adoption of the proposed budget, which will be, I'm sorry, the adoption of a tentative budget, which will be final adopted in August. The only anticipated change that we have right now is the potential change in the tax rate due to the judgment levy, and that's why we'll be doing the adoption in August rather than in June. That question comes up periodically. So with that, the budget this year is approximately the same amount that we had last year. Our revenues are, there are some adjustments that we had in our property tax. We realized that there are some revenues that we had underestimated the previous year when we put them together, and we've had an increase of about $2.3 million that we expect this year. There are some growth in our sales tax, approximately 5%. That includes growths above our previous property, our previous sales tax projections of 2013 for the old fiscal year 014, plus growth that we expect to get through fiscal year 15, so that'll be about 5%. Utility tax is relatively flat. We continue to have building permits that contribute to our licenses and permit growth, and we're anticipating a good year which will continue through 2015. Justice Court, you'll remember from our discussions, that we've had some revenue decreases in there that eventually we hope to be able to address, but that's what we're anticipating for 2015. And then under other revenues, in 2014, we anticipated a fairly significant expenditure of reserves, which we had not even included this year. And so with those numbers, it gives us a budget of $69,582. And then our expenditures have largely remained the same, with the exception of some increases that were provided for last year. The overall budget is an increase of approximately 0.86%. This slide represents a summary of the budget, so you just have an idea of what the percentages are, where our revenue and our expenditures come from. You'll see the majority of our revenues do, are derived from property tax, then sales tax, then utility taxes, and other fees, and, and other sources of revenue. The majority of our expenditures are spent on public safety, with fire and police taking the majority of that, those expenditures. We have non-departmental expenditures, which questions always come up. Those include the expenditures that the general fund supports other activities of the city. That would include things like subsidizing operations, such as the fitness centers, the golf courses. There's also an allocation for Utopia that's in there, and that they fall under other sources, under the non-departmental area. This year, we have proposed several changes to the budget, and we've had some much-needed infrastructure and one-time expenditures that, that we feel like we need to take care of this year. These were considered critical. These will be spent out of the CIP fund, which is actually funds that were accumulated for one-time expenditures, and under these, we have the Utah Cultural Center's initial seed money, which will help for the build out of the basement. We have planning and zoning, some information, some items there. I don't know if you really want me to read them all, but I can certainly do that, or if you have questions about any of these, I'd be happy to entertain the questions.
For, may I, may I add a comment to that as well? I might also note that, and I did mention this, I believe, in the memo that I sent to the council a week or two, but in case I didn't, that these represent largely sort of expenditures that we believe we can't avoid, although they were not in the previous year's budget, both the capital and these operational ones are coming up. But they don't address the council's strategic plan direction in terms of other things that they'd like to accomplish. We will still have that conversation here in the future. I just wanted to clarify that.
And so that you're aware, although we're getting this detailed tonight, of course, we've had a copy of the overall budget and have had that opportunity to review those prior to tonight.
The operational changes in the budget, and I'm sorry, I apologize for the small print there. That's hard to see from a distance. We have had some operational changes that, as Mr. Pyle had mentioned, we considered critical, that needed to be addressed, and in each of the departments, we have addressed those as best as we can, and we feel like this represents a budget that's representative of what the city needs and is necessary to continue to operate in an effective manner. And that's the conclusion of the information that I have.
To the council. Councilman Buehler.
I noticed a couple of people in, in the room here taking some notes. Is all of this information available on the website?
It can be. We haven't posted this presentation yet, but we'll certainly have.
Pie chart and those kinds of things.
We'll, we'll put it on.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there are comments. Yeah, I, I need your glasses, I think.
So we appreciate your presenting that to us. That will give us an opportunity to look at those. Now, as I understand it, and this is a tentative budget adopted per state statute until we have that hearing in August.
Yes.
And that truth in taxation, in fact, sometimes it's looked upon and sometimes even reported as a tax increase, which is not a correct statement. Would you, in fact, maybe I'll let you take just a moment to explain that, although I could, and I think would be better coming from you.
I would be pleased to do that, Mr. Mayor. The state law requires that any time the property tax rate is adjusted either up or down from the initial certified rate, which is, which is provided by the county, that they hold a truth in taxation hearing. Those are scheduled in August. Typically, we use the date that the county has provided so that all the city council meetings are on the same night, so people can attend their respective meetings. Each year, there are entities, businesses typically, that are large taxpayers that may come in and protest a number of years of being either, that their property tax values have not been fairly evaluated. They'll take that to the Board of Adjustments, and as a result, the county will calculate how much of a rebate they may be eligible for. By state law, cities are allowed to receive the type of, the amount of revenue they collected from the previous year, and so when they pay, when the county authorizes a rebate, they will actually adjust the revenues of the city down. So in order to bring that back up, they also calculate a rate that's called a judgment levy that allows those revenues to remain level, thus maintaining stability for municipal operations.
So it would be fair to say that we adjust the rate, but the total amount of tax collected after the adjustment remains the same? It's also, is it also true for residents who may appeal their property tax levy and get an adjustment?
It's only valid for amounts over a certain amount. I believe that's $25,000 adjustment. So residents is unless they have a very large home. So residents, unless they have a very large home, would typically not be affected by this.
Okay, very good.
I'd like to add one more note.
Certainly.
We will also be adopting the RDA, the Housing Authority, and the Building Authority budgets in June. They don't wait until August, and I know in the previous hearings, that's been a little bit of a confusion for people. The reason is that those are not affected by the truth in taxation hearing.
Okay, thank you. In fact, we'll be hearing those items shortly. Councilman Vincent.
Just a question. If we have any questions as we go through this budget, what's the most appropriate way to handle that?
The quickest, thank you, sir, sorry. The quickest and easiest way to address those would be either through me, and I can direct those to the proper department, or I might even have the information available right off the bat, or also you can feel free to talk with Jim or Paul, both of whom are fully vested and put together the budget, and in that process should be able to answer any questions as well.
To the council, further comments, discussion, action?
Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 14-70, adopting the tentative budget.
Okay, Councilman Buehler moves that we approve the budget. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is properly before us. Do we have any further discussion to the motion? Perhaps a clarification, because this is a tentative budget, the statement is that if we were to find something which the council felt ought to be changed in that meeting on August 14th, motions could be made to modify it or change it in any way they would see appropriate, of course, with the majority vote. We hope that if you're going to do that, you kind of give the staff some heads up and so that that can be properly prepared. It's not required. The rule of four stands immutable. So, lest the public think that we adopt and cannot change, this is to make sure that the budget continues since our fiscal year ends June 30th, and we will have a budget in place, but the final budget, the actual budget that we will use, will be the one that we adopt on August 14th. And there can be changes to that up to that point.
That's correct, sir. And I would foresee there probably would be, I don't think they'll be of any great or large nature, but absolutely.
All right, thank you for that. With that, seeing no further discussion, we'll place the motion for a vote. All in favor of approving the tentative budget for next fiscal year, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously.
Mayor?
Councilman Lang.
One question. We don't have a meeting on the 14th. It's August 12th, I believe. Okay.
I'll bet I did say August 14th. I was just giving the year.
Okay, well, just in case they're coming back on a specific date.
On our traditional Tuesday.
Tuesday night, yes.
Thank you for that clarification. Next, we go on to Resolution 14-71, to authorize the city to enter into a right-of-way contract with Geneva Rock Products for property on 6200 South. This is in connection with putting that road through to U-111. Mr. Pyle, any additional information you need to have there?
No, sir. Maybe I can make a note that this is one of a number of properties that'll probably come before the body through this process, but no further detail needed.
Yeah, we wish it were all one piece. It would make it easier, but as usual, it involves, I don't know. Thank you. Any comments or discussion or action with council? Councilman Vincent?
Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 14-71.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Lang. Any discussion to the motion? Councilman Vincent?
Mayor, just to make the comment, that the funding source for this is through state quarter preservation funds.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously for Resolution 14-71. Now to our consent agenda, Resolution 14-72. This is for execution of a warranty deed to UDOT for property at 3087 South Corbin Drive. The situation here, this is the property right off of 3100 South, where you make the turn off of Bangator Highway. Originally, a home was purchased by UDOT, but somehow in the process was deeded to the city. It really wasn't our home. We, I guess we could contest it, but we would lose in a court battle because the contract was actually between UDOT and the homeowner. And so this corrects that and gets it back to UDOT, and they've said they will take very good care of it. Anyway, Resolution 14-72, to the council for action or discussion.
Mayor, I'd move for approval of Resolution 14-72.
Have a motion to approve from Councilwoman Lang. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Vincent has a second. Motion is properly before us. Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have Resolution 14-73, to ratify the city manager's appointment of Barbara Thomas to the West Valley City Planning Commission for a four-year term, I guess that is, approximately. Is that right?
Yes, sir, close to. Yes, sir, close to.
Yeah. Now, is that completing a current term?
It is, that's correct. She had a short absence from the planning commission, and now she's coming back on and fulfilling that.
Yes, okay. Anything further, Mr. Pyle, on that? To the council, then.
Motion to approve Resolution 14-73.
Councilman Hyun has made a motion to approve Resolution 14-73. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Rushden, a second. Motion is properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. I believe that there is, we finished all of our work in our executive session, there's no need for any further one in this meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Pyle?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, then, anything further from the council? If not, our last motion, and we will finish for the evening.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, non-debatable. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.
I will call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency. And note, we've had opening ceremony, and all members of the RDA board are present. We have a number of minutes to be approved tonight, from March 25th, April 1st, April 8th, and April 22nd, 2014.
Chairman, move for approval of the four stated agenda items for agenda meetings?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion before us to approve the minutes of these four meetings. Is there any discussion to that? Seeing none, ask all those in favor to please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved unanimously. Any communications or report of our CEO tonight?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, will you please introduce our resolution, which is the adoption of the RDA tentative budget?
I will, thank you, sir. This item is to be considered in roughly the same manner as the one in the regular meeting, and then we have the same in the next two.
Okay, any questions and any need for clarification on accepting this tentative budget? Okay, as noted, this one will be up for final approval June 3rd. Okay, seeing none, a motion would be in order?
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of Resolution 14-10, the tentative budget.
Second. Okay. Any discussion to the live motion to approve Resolution 410, the adoption tentative budget? None? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Any other business or motions to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
This body is adjourned.
I call to order the regular meeting of the Housing Authority. Note, we had an opening ceremony, all members of this body are present. We have minutes for review and perhaps approval, April 1st, 2014 regular meeting, and April 22nd, 2014 special regular meeting.
I'd move for approval of both sets of minutes?
Have a motion and a second, thank you. Any discussion? Not all in favor of approving both sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's to pass unanimously. Mr. Pyle, any communications or report today?
No, sir, thank you.
Would you please introduce Resolution 14-02?
Yes, sir. This would be for the purpose of adopting a tentative budget for the Housing Authority for the upcoming fiscal year.
Thank you. Any discussion or question or motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 14-02.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also passes unanimously. Unless anybody has any further business, the next item on our agenda would be to adjourn if there's a motion to do so.
All moved?
All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Call to order the regular meeting of the Building Authority. We've had opening ceremony, and all members are present. Item number four is the approval of our minutes from February 4th and April 22nd.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of the minutes of February 4th annual meeting and April 22nd special regular meeting.
Thank you. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Is there some discussion for this motion? Seeing none, let's vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Mr. Pyle, any communications or report?
No, sir, thank you.
Will you introduce Resolution 14-02?
I will, thank you, sir. This item is to consider adoption of the tentative budget for the Building Authority for the fiscal year 2014-15.
Thank you. Counsel?
I have one question on it, and maybe I've asked this before and I just forgot, but on our expenditures, we have Maverick Center capital projects, and then this year we have a zero item in, for the proposed budget. We just, I'm assuming we're going to be doing capital projects on the Maverick Center? It's just probably in a different line item, or?
Yes, sir. I mean, we do have repair and replacement projects throughout the year, would be out of a different fund. There is an actual Maverick Center fund itself. I forget which fund number it is. Jim?
Yes.
Sorry, I put him on the spot too, but yeah, it has its own separate budget that those sorts of expenditures would be.
I can address that specifically.
Yes, sir, would you like also your why that has gone to zero? You bet. Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Pyle and council, that expenditure represents monthly, well, annual payments we've been paying for the LED upgrade that we did in the arena. That pays off in 2014, and those payments aren't required in 2015. We have paid that from the repair and replacement fund, which we will continue to fund.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of Resolution 14-02, adopting the tentative budget for the Building Authority.
Second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion to this motion? All right, then let's vote on Resolution 14-02. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. That concludes our business for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned.